Father, thank you for this day and the day that you've given us. We ask that you continue to be with our county. We ask that you give us what we need to provide what we need to do. We ask this in your name.
Amen.
Praise the Lord. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
It must have been a lot of beans to count this morning.
She's ready for the kind of havoc.
Mercy.
I'm ready for what's supposed to happen.
Does she have her initials?
Without further ado, let's get into discussion of the status and progress of the Comanche County Jail project with presentation by the project architect and contractor offered by Jeff Chapman. And you want to lead on with it, Morris?
On the status of inspections, we're really down to final minor items as well as getting the inspections done that are required as a prerequisite for the jail commission coming out. And I'm told that the fire inspector will be here at 1:00 today and that the health inspector is scheduled for next Wednesday. However, they're trying to work in a date where he can come earlier. So we still need to have that official written request from HMC giving us the date that they say they'll be ready for the jail commission. However, it's looking very positive that they will be ready within the next week. And then it'll be a matter of how soon the jail commission can get out here. As I said, we've been keeping them informed. They have up to 30 days from the date the agency notifies us, but they do know about it and they've been telling me that they're going to try to get here as soon as they possibly can. We've tested all the smoke. Everything's passed. We started going through intercoms and doors and lights and cameras. And so far, everything is passing there. Systems are functioning properly. We do have a change order item that I would like to have the court review and approve today. There's some short life equipment, which is all the pots and pans and forks and everything they need to operate the kitchen that they call, you know, it's not hard equipment that's attached to the building. And there's an allowance in the contract to purchase all of that. And we'd like to take that money out of the agency contract and have the owner order it directly. It's all set up. They're ready to push the button to order it as soon as we can approve. Just taking the money out of agency's contract, it'll reduce the contract amount, make that money available. And then when the contract, when the equipment comes in, we'll review it, check on it, have the sheriff sign off on it. We'll sign off on it and get it over to the auditor for processing and payment with your monthly bills. And then, so that's the short life equipment. And then the furnishings, fixtures and equipment also has in it an allowance for your inmate uniforms and your mattresses and all of those things that you're going to need to outfit and provide for the inmates when they first come in. And we would like to also change order that out and just order it directly. I believe the chief mentioned that last time he talked to you, there was, it was just setting up with Bob Barker. You're going to keep ordering from them, setting up a one-time account through HMC was just proving cumbersome and so it was faster and easier for it to be ordered through the sheriff's department. So what this change order does is it takes the original contract sum and it reduces it by $16,485, reducing agency's contract to the 9.624,082 million. And then again, those funds will be available to be processed through the county auditor's office.
And this is acceptable to HMC?
Yes, it's acceptable. And we have, I've signed it and the original has gone to HMC for signature. So what I was hoping is you could approve it today so we can get everything ordered. And then as soon as the document is signed by HMC, the originals will be sent here to the judge's office for his signature, once we both have our original signatures on it, like we did last time.
The move we approved, the change order is stated?
There's a legal here. I just go say this is change order six, so we'll have that in the record.
Sheriff, is that all correct? Y'all are ready to order this stuff?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay.
Shelby, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Sheriff, any comments about this particular thing?
We went with Bob Barker because we also, we purchased from ICS jail supplies. And when we send them, the, we send ICS, well, Bob Barker and on prices compared. And then we, we went on ahead and went with Bob Barker because they reduce the prices on uniforms, mattresses and the different items that we have for the jails. So, I mean, what we order is what we're going to need once we're in there.
You've put in the order that will give you everything you need to open up and go to work in the jail.
Correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
When, and when will it be here? Do you have any idea?
No, but I can find out. But we did tell them that we were almost in the process of going into new facility and, but I can call them back.
Well, I'm just curious and I think it's something you probably need to know to help you with your plans.
I'll check on it.
All right. Any other questions, comments, court?
Some of that Bob Barker stuff is already here since the chief mentioned it to the court last week. And then the short life equipment will be here that first week in March if we order it today.
So it's all, it's all, and that's not all benedict, but you're ordering it and he feel like you.
Yes, sir, once it's been presented.
Okay. After the court review.
So we will have it before they are finished training and.
Right. The jail, you says here, the original contract sum was 9.824,715 million. So refresh my mind.
Oh, uh-huh. You just caught, yes, my office. This reduction of 184,000, when she put a negative in front of it, she changed it after I checked it, thinking it was wrong. And it made it a double negative, which is a positive. So I need to, I need to redo the change order. Thank you. You just caught a math error. The program automatically, when it says it's deducted, it automatically makes it negative. So you're not supposed to put a plus or a minus in any of these, in any of these columns because it knows it deducted. So it added it instead of deducting it. Does that make sense?
It didn't add it to the total.
It did. What she did is after I checked it, she thought it was a mistake, just put a minus in there. So we'll, I'll get that corrected.
But this, this is the proper amount.
This is the proper amount, but this needs to be subtracted from there instead of added to there.
Well, it has been subtracted from that figure to get to this figure.
Yeah. It is correct.
Okay, it is correct. I'm looking at it upside down. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, what is your question? I'm making problems that I don't have.
The 9.8.
Yes.
That's the original contract for the jail.
Yes, yes.
But we have spent about eleven.
That's your construction cost. Your budget includes everything that you've spent, including your, so it includes all your professional fees, what I presented to you last time at court. Yeah, includes professional fees. It included the hazardous materials abatement. It included financing costs, issuance of bonds, all the way through.
This is everything, everything pulled out.
This is HMC's contract. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that everybody understood that.
I'm making problems for myself.
Yeah, yeah. But I just want to make sure that, you know, you see these numbers tomorrow, everybody understands what that is.
There's a difference between construction cost and project cost. Project cost is, you know, your geotech, your survey, everything that it cost you to start this from the day you started.
I just want to make sure it was clear.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay. Sorry, excuse me. If the numbers are right, if the minus is in that second column is the deducted minus and just got me confused. I thought I had a mistake and I went off and geez.
Where do you set, Louis?
I have a question. The original amount of budget for the jail, I think, was $7 million. And that was originally approved amount.
That was the bond amount issued.
Right.
Anticipating that was the cost.
That's not the jail contract, though.
No, that's not the contract. That was the amount of bonds that were issued anticipating that would be the cost.
Yeah.
And we're at almost 11. Am I, did I agree there?
Well, that, that doesn't necessarily mean much if I understand the property.
Morris, you ever going to say something else? Well, I guess I'm confused. It doesn't, doesn't it concern the court that if it's $11 million, have we gone almost 50% over budget?
Maurice, before we started, we anticipated building a new jail. So we checked around what price a 48-bed jail was. After we got started and got planning, we decided we should put a courtroom in it. And there were other things added that we didn't anticipate. But we put the bond on a, on a ballot, it is passed, and the people passed a $7 million bond issue. That's where that figure comes.
I recall that, Pete.
All right. But that was not the original estimate. That was the original estimate before we started, before we added a courtroom, before we added 300-foot tower and other things that had to be done. That was the bond amount.
Well, the original contract, how soon is the amount shown on here? The $9,824,715, that was the, I was not here when I have done, but that's what he said it is. And there's not a yes ands or buts about that. Then the change, by change orders, has been a minus and, and the minus should not have been shown in there, I don't think.
No, it is. It's correct. The second column is supposed to have, is not supposed to have the minus. I just got turned around. Sorry.
So that, the new contract sum is 9,624,082,63, and that's the proper amount?
Yes, sir.
For the contract sum. All right.
Like the judge, I was not here when this took place, but, and I guess my comment or question would be, it is not of necessity that the bond amount and the total cost be one and the same, is there?
Oh, no. Not at all. It could be more or less, either one could be a higher one or a cheaper one. Anything else from your standpoint that we need to know about?
No, sir. We're just, if you can, yeah, we've already approved paying change order six and we are, will be getting the fire inspection at 1:00, so after the health. We're right there, ready.
Have, have we voted?
No, sir.
We haven't voted on the change order yet.
No, sir.
Okay.
Which, which we need to. Is, is there a motion?
In a second.
In a second on the, and we were discussing anything else to, from any of the court questions or comments or? Okay. All in favor of the motion, I seconded for the payment of the bills up to this point and the cost to prove what, what show, most figures of this change order. With the change order number six indicated by raising right hand, all of those same sign, all voted for. Most secure. Okay. As it's discussed, prove, disprove action required by the county, if any, with respect to the completion of the county jail project, which can pass it off, then change order six would be part of that. Is there anything else that we need to? You don't have anything else, any other court?
Contractor representative, anything to add?
Governor Long?
What do y'all have to just say we're going to be through at this point?
They're going to determine the jail commission as far as, you know, what they say, but as far as inspections and whatnot, I would anticipate third week of March. I'd just spend a couple more weeks to get through and that might be even shooting at a distance.
Okay.
Is that, though, after the jail commission comes, after substantial completion? Is that to finish your punch list?
No, it'll be passed then. I would say mid-March for substantial as far as punch lists is concerned.
Punch lists, right.
Yes.
But he's, but the jail commission will come before that. So your substantial completion is defined as the day the jail commission certifies it and you can move in and operate your facility.
Correct.
So he's projecting out to when you can, when you'll be finished with your training.
Yes. You should be able to, I would think, mid-March occupy the building, if not sooner.
With, with, yes.
And you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. That completes items five and six. Okay, item seven on the agenda, discussion, discussion on creating a budget calendar for 2016, 2017 budget. Department heads should be prepared to report status of the current budget year versus the approved budget, including staffing and I'm the author of that. All of the department heads, I don't, they're not all here, but the ones that are here. And you will be in touch, I know, with other department heads need to comply with this and we're not going to wait till next month for it. You should have it already. If you don't, you haven't been paying attention to what your job is. We're going to start on this and if we get to your part of this budget and we don't have the proper information from you, there's a good possibility that you're going to have problems and probably not going to have even close to the budget that you, you would like to have. Now, I want to warn everybody, I think we're going to have a, we're going to have a budget decrease we're going to have to have. I don't intend to raise taxes if we can get around it and I don't know of any reason why we can't. And that means everybody's got to take a serious look at their budget and be sure that you're, you're proposing something that's accurate, that's needed. And if it's, if it's not, you're going to stand a good chance that while we're cutting, we may end up cutting something that you really need and didn't choose to explain it to us properly during this budget process. Some of you have said something about starting this early. And I really think that budgetary process probably should have started January 1st and you, you would have had three months of operating on the existing budget at that point and should have a feeling for where you are and how it's working out and what you want to look at for the next year. I would say there's no room for hiring additional employees in any part of the budget. And I would say further that you all need to review the employees that you have and make sure that what you have is, is what's needed because I think we've got to cut this budget and I can't tell you at this point where we're going to do it, but you better, you better protect what really needs protecting and be willing to sacrifice some other things that may not need the protection in the budget process because we're going to look at this with really serious attitudes. And I assume, I haven't talked to each of the court members. I think they understand this. If they don't, they're going to get a crew to wait when we get through with this budget process. So if any of the public has any budget comments or questions, I would ask you to talk with your commissioner or talk with me and let us know what they are. We're not going to have too many open sessions of listening to stuff that doesn't really have anything to do with what we're doing and what we're trying to do. So you all voted for commissioner. You have a commissioner that's representing your area. And I'm here nearly all the time. I'm not every minute of every day, but a bigger part of the time I'm here in the office and willing to talk to anybody about it. So with that said, any comments from the commissioners? You're all going to, have to vote on the budget and all going to be involved. You've all represented a group of people, excuse me, group of people on the budget. Not necessarily an area anymore, but remember that also. Go ahead.
Judge, I agree with you with the process that you want to follow. I'm behind that process. I don't have a problem with it. Sounds good.
This isn't so much directed at, at what the judge says because that's certainly acceptable. But LaWanna, when, and this may not even be your job, but at what point will we be able to develop some sort of a projected revenue stream for next year?
We receive preliminary appraisal numbers from the appraisal district the end of May normally. And that will help with the revenue projections.
Okay. You wouldn't care to guess at them before then, so we have a target, would you?
That would not be something of my expertise. You could contact Brian at the appraisal district.
I think each of the commissioners ought to go behind, get it with the appraisal district, the leaders who's Brian she's talking about and.
We need to know what our constraints are, but just, you know, with women.
He would have more information, I think, probably than anybody. I've been out there and I have talked with him, but talked to some of the ladies that have worked there for him good while, just preliminary discussions about the budget.
Yeah, I'm not in, certainly in favor of spending every penny available, but at least we have a target, a preliminary target.
We need to know what we're dealing with and if, if everybody doesn't understand, we're going to have to have a budget cut, understand it from now because we are.
Well, I think too, we can get the head start on the process if we know what people request, what they think they're going to need and have those numbers ready. And then when we have preliminary values, if reductions are necessary, which most probably they will be because we won't have the abundance of C ter's monies next year or the 1747 monies available for road and bridge. So there will be probably some cuts necessary from whatever's requested unless we have some very tight budget requests that will be able to be lived with within the means of the reduced values.
Well, I think that if you know, with the budget, we need to look exactly what first, what you need to run your offices with just to comply with the statutory duties, not just the, any bells and whistles that we might need, that you might want, but just the, you know, what it takes to run that office. I noticed, excuse me, Judge, while we see an email this morning from another officer too, that's from Pioneer, says, I want to let y'all know that Pioneer announced today we were reducing our rig count in Eagle Ford to zero by end of the first quarter. Difficult decision comes in response to the negative outlook for oil and natural gas prices in 2016, 2016. For now, our company continues, operations in the region will be associated with maintaining and servicing existing producing wells across our acreage. We expect to reevaluate our plans for future drilling in the Eagle Ford when the market conditions allow. You know, it's from Rhonda, she's a public affairs specialist. So I look for other companies to start doing the same. I know the rig count dropped from 18 of the day to 15 in Karnes County.
Well, I understand ConocoPhillips only has two rigs operating in Karnes right now.
And some of the rigs have moved down south to Demet and LaSalle counties, but Karnes was, still maintains to have at least right now 15 rigs working in our county.
My information from Marathon is that they intend to keep six rigs running because, at least at this point, because they have two frac crews they're committed to and it takes six rigs to keep two frac crews busy. So unless something drastically changes, they've got a lot of undrilled out leases to the west and southwest of Kennedy and Karnes City. So if you looked in your permits in the paper, they're still fairly active and in Cana is still fairly active. But those are about the only two. The other thing, and I get, this was, I've read it several places, but our, our being Karnes County's average cost of production on condensate is somewhere in the low 30s. Dewitt County, for whatever reason, must have a sweeter spot and theirs is down in the low 20s. And so what this article, and I wish I could relate which, I've seen it several financial blurbs, but anyway, is that you're seeing concentration in these sweet spots and the rest of them are being bled out. And the same thing is in the Klein and the Permian and everything else. Where it's profitable, they're drilling. Where it's not profitable, they're moving rigs out. And we're in a fairly low-cost area, but with the situation where it is now, we're underwater again by about $5 a barrel. So anyway, that said, and, and this is perhaps, I guess it's the right form, but I mentioned it to the judge and I'd like to mention it to the court and the rest of the commissioners, I will comply with whatever the court determines they want to do in terms of scheduling these meetings. This is a personal thing from my standpoint. If we could set these meetings up to where the week that we have a regular court session, either first of the month, Tuesday or whatever it is, second Tuesday or the last business day, if we could consolidate those, if possible, I need some blocks of time without, say, having a meeting each week. I would much rather meet two or three times in a week that we're already meeting than scatter them out. Now, that's just a personal request. If it doesn't fit somebody's schedule, I'll do what I've got to do to make it work. So anyway.
LaWanna, do we have a number, how the budget ended up last year? You know, were we, we had a budget number last year and where we actually ended up? We have that number?
We do not have that number totally right now. We are in the process of our independent audit and once all payables are booked back to the budget, then when it's complete, we'll be able to.
I think that would be helpful too, to have us have that number if we can. I know you provided us for the first four months, but I'd like to see that number. What departments or did what and how they ended up?
The audit, for our audit, which, which year?
October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015. So the.
And that's, that's the budget year of October 14th through September 15th.
Correct.
And so when you're looking at that, keep in mind that that's, that's a budget year. We're not in that budget year, of course, or wouldn't be.
Correct.
And I think we need to know how many companies we have in our county that are probably trying to go into, are, 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 are planning to go into bankruptcy. I know we have one right now that we're, we're dealing with, but.
Let's, let's see. A and B Valve is already in, aren't they?
I don't know.
I think so. And how about NAC?
Yeah.
They're operating bankruptcy, aren't they?
I believe so. Well, the, the tax appraiser should have.
That information.
That information for everybody that's in.
Yeah.
They should have notified the appraisal district and just hearing it down the street through the coffee.
Well, yeah, that's.
It's not going.
That's, that's, that's my information. It's the best the coffee shop had to offer.
Yeah, I understand. I drink every morning also. There's lots of information that's not exactly accurate.
You know, and I was going through this budget and I was looking at courthouse maintenance and I was thinking after we had the discussion the other, the other day at the, during the meeting, that I think we need to do a.
meeting, that I think we need to do a, or allow Warren, whoever the maintenance person is, in any, any year, to do a thorough assessment of every building we have, to see what needs there are, if any, or potential needs for the future. And then when we create that budget, put all that into the maintenance so they have control over what's gonna, what we might need to do, not like, well, the, you know, we can, not saying that, well, your, your, your place, for example, you know, you can go there and look and find what it needs and we could put all of it in the maintenance budget, we have a true, true maintenance number, uh, other than somebody calling, say, hey, I need a light bulb change. Well, you know, not just that, but a true number on what we're gonna fix and how we're gonna fix it and potential problems that we may have in the future, needs we may have. Try to identify all this stuff. I don't know, Warren, you, do you agree with that or not?
Yes, yes, I can, and I've been to all the buildings, so I pretty much know a lot of it.
And, and that includes all the satellite buildings, everything we have that we're using, you know, to me, 'cause we never, again, we never really look at, I don't think we've ever looked at what we really have before we're needing or using. You know, not thoroughly, but to get it, where one person has that information that we can go to and, and then work from there.
Thirdly, you mean by checking every little, so looking at it?
Yeah.
See whether it's compliance or everything.
Safety, yeah, safety and, yeah, but safety and security issues, the whole nine...
Doors, locks, everything. Sounds good.
Also may need to assess whether all buildings are need to be retained by the county.
Yes.
Yes.
I've got an idea personally that we have more buildings than we need. I'm not sure where I would come upon it.
I'm agreement with the judge.
I wasn't a part of it. I'm here dealing with it now. But uh, each commissioner needs to be looking and, and you're not only responsible for the district you're elected in, but you're responsible for the whole county now, under the unit system that we have, so uh, don't, don't go to court and say, oh, that's not my district, because each of you have a responsibility for the whole county, same as I do.
It's his fault.
So I agree.
Okay.
Agree with it? My fault?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's it.
Anything else from the court? Uh, I was talking the other day, been thinking, but again, you know, like, I don't know, our royalties, do, can we get, do we get those automatically deposited into a royalty account, or do they go to...
They go into the general fund.
But, but do they get automatically deposited?
Not all, or...
Just ConocoPhillips, that's the only one that we have the option. Everybody else sends checks.
We have recently signed up for electronic transfer of Marathon's production checks. Stata Oil does not offer that service.
I, I was just, I'm not sure that we, I've been reluctant as a judge to sign any division orders which they require to pay, uh, are part of the production, because I don't think we have a clear, uh, I'm not sure what word I want to use, but I, I don't, I really don't think we know what we have in the way of production and royalty payments that are due, and I've talked to the taxing authorities last week, and we're working on, on trying to come up with that, but we own a whole bunch of town lots that we acquired through tax sales, and we own those for the benefit of ourselves and the other taxing authorities, so that money is not all ours, it's not ours to spend, we have to account for it, and the other taxing authorities sometimes acquire judgments themselves, and, and they own the property, any property that they get uh through a, through a tax, a tax suit or a tax sale, uh, for the benefit of all the, the authorities that, that tax, and that's the, generally the county and the, the four cities and the hospital district and uh, who else?
Schools.
Somebody else?
School districts.
The what?
School districts.
Yeah, all four school districts and all four cities that we have. But at any rate, those are where we are and uh, we'll be meeting on a, I, I hear you when you say you would prefer not to meet as much, but...
No, no, I, I don't mind meeting much. Um, what I try not to do is meet every week, but meet three or four times in one week, try and accomplish as much as possible, if it'll work.
Well, we, we'll, we'll try, I'll try anything, see if we're finding...
That's, that's what we were doing last year, is if we had a regular meeting, we would meet perhaps all day for two or three days during that week, and then leave the next week open. But, you know, that's up to the court, that's not up to me. That's a request. If it doesn't fit, I'll comply with whatever we need to do.
Well, we'll try to convey that to the commissioner's court as well as we can.
Yeah. Luana, I, I didn't mean to interrupt, well, I did, I'm sorry. Is your accounting period that ends the end of the month cleared by the, by the first Tuesday? In other words, what I'm trying to say is if, if we go through this month, we would have five months' worth of data on, on each department? Okay, when, um, what's the cutoff? In other words, is, is it better to take a look at it on that second Tuesday? Is the information that we have available to us on the last day of the month when we should consider that total expenditures for that five-month period?
Previous month is, would be available by the first Tuesday meeting.
First?
Because it's the second Tuesday, yes.
Okay, okay. That, that's what I was getting at. In other words, by, by the second Tuesday meeting, we should have five months' worth of data. Okay.
Any other comments?
Do, do we want to take a look at meeting on this after the end-of-the-month meeting and have the department's heads present their wish list to us at that time, Judge?
I would like for us to meet at least one time during the month.
Okay.
And ask that they have information for us, all the department heads...
Okay.
At that meeting.
Okay.
To kind of give us a start of this thing, and I don't care when we do it particularly, but uh, we need to decide.
Originally last week, it had been discussed for department heads to have their budgetary requests to you prior to the twenty-fifth, which is the next scheduled budget meeting.
That would be the Thursday, right?
Well, we'll, we'll try that and see, uh, are there, the department heads that are here, does that create any problem for any of them?
No, sir.
Okay, well, we'll look for your budget request to be in my office before that, that be on uh, February twenty-fifth, is that what we said?
Yes, sir. If, uh...
And uh, if you're not gonna be able to get in touch with me and let me know, let me know why, because I'm gonna embarrass you in a commissioner's court public meeting if we don't have the things that we need on time. Any other comments, questions?
And, and that, the, to-date information, I guess, for the department heads is, as far as current expenditures go, is available from Luana's office, correct?
They have all received them.
They receive them? Okay.
Yes, they've all got them.
Okay.
We've got them, I know.
Okay. Excuse me for being uninformed.
Well, no, I, this is kind of new for all of us in a sense, not budgetary process necessarily, I assume everybody budgets, I guess I'm assuming some of us not so. But they ought to be budgeting if they want to. Comments, questions, anything, court?
Can we go back to the division order comment that you made a minute ago?
About what?
Back some time ago, Carol Lake came in and above her firm came in, and we paid them a hundred and fifty thousand Mussumenes dollars to do some title work, and it might be a good thing to refresh our memories on what they did and what we paid for, to address your, you know...
I frankly don't know what they did, and that's what we paid for, whatever they did, and it was, it was presented about the time I was getting involved.
I recall there was a phase four or something to that equivalent that was not completed, but that was included in their, but their request for compensation, and I don't know if we've ever received any more or not, and that first...
The interest, no.
I was gonna say, that first segment was supposed to have identified all of the properties that the county had an interest in, and they were still short some of those, and we paid for it if we didn't get it, uh, that's, you know, I don't know, but in other words, we paid for that, and then, then they arbitrarily had jumped ahead and started researching the individual properties, and that was where the big bill was from Lake. But the, the, the first segment was for them to identify them, and somewhere there should be a list of what they have identified. I doubt that they completed it, to be honest, like you're saying, that, that last segment was probably not completed, but anyway.
Well, I think it's just relevant to the fact you're concerned to sign a division order without a proper title opinion, and I think that's what we've been paying for, you know, through Butler and Carol Lake, and I think it would be wise to investigate that, in my opinion.
Well, I would know frankly because I wasn't involved in that very much, whether they'd done what they were hired for or not. I had a big reception with Lake about it, and over the size of his bill, it was ridiculous, I thought.
I agree.
Herb, can, can, do you recall any of this? Do you remember what was going on exactly?
Yes, I...
Can you enlighten us?
Basically, what happened is we signed a order, or I signed a uh, agreement for Butler to give us a cost estimate as to how much it was gonna cost to, for the legal fees and for the research, and that letter somehow got moved over and to open Carol Lake's office wide open, and they got started, and the court realized how much it was gonna cost. They talked about a million-plus dollars to finish the project, and the court just shut the system down to stop the bleeding, and I believe that's basically where we are. We got some information from them, but we didn't get a lot of, we, we just got some run sheets, but none of them were complete that I got in my office, so that's basically what I understand.
Well, we did pay them to complete phase one. I think they should be pushed to complete that, and that was the identification of all properties.
That has not, there's been no identification since the original run sheet that they did, Carol Lake's office has not done anything since that date, to my knowledge. Is that basically what you understand, Judge?
Well, I didn't see anything they'd done.
Yeah.
We had a row about their bill and what they had done, and there wasn't anything. I've spent fifty-something years practicing law in Karnes County, have dealt with all the gas matters for all that time, and uh, I mean, that was the most pathetic thing I've ever seen, and it wasn't usable to, to me, to see what Karnes County, oh, has what they own and what they have coming in, I, I still don't know. And I'm not signing a division order for anybody. I, I'm part of the problem in that I won't sign a division order that says we own a certain, uh, a certain interest in a particular city lot, and we own in a lot of city lots in Karnes, in, in every town in the county, not just, not just Karnes City. And uh, until we could get something that identifies these, and, and I don't think it's worth a hundred thousand dollars to look at, look at, and, and I was looking at a map yesterday about it, and the, the lots and blocks are not numbered properly. I know how they ought to be numbered and how they are numbered. I went down and got a recent map that was compared it to an oilfield map and an oil sunning map, and it's not even put to the same. And uh, I mean, if we don't get that straightened out, we're not ever gonna get any money out of it, 'cause I'm not gonna agree to, to take an amount that's paid on some interest that we don't know what we're paying, what we're being paid on. And, and it's not easy because every, you gotta look at every tract that you deal with and, and look at the title from God when he gave us this till now, and none of this is easy and is a fair time concern, uh, but it's not worth paying the amount of money that, that the county had obligated themselves to pay.
I some, in the back of my mind, think that their estimate when it was stopped was somewhere close to a million dollars to complete the title search and give the information to the judge sufficient for him to sign off on it, on the division order, because it was a big project to the judge.
I don't think I ever saw a figure. I don't think they ever wrote a figure down.
For some reason, I heard it...
David, I think you were right on the run sheets. I think that, that the manager of Carol Lake's office said they missed about twenty percent finishing the run sheet, and I believe y'all approved to pay an extra twenty thousand dollars over the sixty thousand to finish the complete run sheets. Y'all did not agree to spend the million for the division orders and the deeds.
They should be forced to comply and finish those run sheets because they were paid for that, Herb. I'm almost a hundred percent sure.
You said back in the minutes, it's not hard to find.
They have been paid. Now, Langley-Bannack was not paid anything because we have not received an invoice from them, and we have contacted them on a couple of occasions, and they don't want the money, that's fine.
Well, I, I think that, like I say, if we paid Lake and Lake committed to providing the county with a complete, complete set of run sheets, not an incomplete set, but they'd be crazy to do.
He was working for Langley-Bannack, was he not?
Yes, that's the contract.
He was not working for the county.
No, no, they went, they took it upon themselves to go hard.
Kind of playing the bottom.
Yeah.
But there are a lot of issues out there where we aren't getting what we are supposed to be getting, not only with the oil and gas, but with the tax abatement, that they have not reimbursed us the legal fees. There's things out there that we've got money we need to recover.
Well, I, I think that this is one, especially if we can get the run sheets, and I'm not proposing to spend a lot of money, don't misunderstand me, but if they would give us the complete run sheets, you can hire a landman cheap now.
Well, I bet you could hire Lake and Associates cheap right now, 'cause they've lost a lot of business.
Well, and I want to...
I'm worried I'm doing over my dead body.
Well, one of their...
Well, we need what we contracted with them to provide, and if we have not received the run sheets...
I'm eighty years old now, so I don't worry too much about my dead body.
Well, we, we, we at least, the county at least needs to get what we paid for. Then what we do with that...
I'll look into that.
Then what we do, the court can determine, but if, I've had, and, and this is not a promotion of any particular person, but one of the fellows who worked for Lake and Company said, if you want this research, I will do it for a fraction of what they were wanting to do at car. So there, there are some deals out there if you want to do it.
I know there's more now than there were, no question.
The price that they give us at the time was priced on a market that was wide open, so uh...
Yeah.
There could be a difference in the, in the cost now that...
Yeah, probably about twenty percent of what it was then.
Well, we should at least get the run sheets that have been paid for.
I was gonna say, the stuff we paid for, we need to press them for. What we do after that, the court can determine, but if we paid for it, they need to send us the hubcaps for a car.
Well, actually, the general manager actually said he didn't have too much left to consider all the run sheets to finish that final page you were talking about.
I don't think I've ever seen a single run sheet. Is anybody on the court?
I haven't. Herb, have you, have they sent you any?
I saw the preliminary ones, but I have not seen anything since. You, you understand? We gotta get crosswired with each other when we get into this thing. And they stopped everything as far as.
Well, I don't think we can take any action on this, but I think it ought to be put on the agenda for action to instruct Herb or someone, whomever it may be, Jeff Chapman, whomever the court decides to do, to build a fire under somebody.
Well, I'd like to go back to the minutes and find out exactly what the court ordered them to do. And hopefully remind them of that and see where they are and what their response is to that.
Could you do that by the end of the month, maybe? By the last meeting of the month?
I'll try to do that.
Carol, would you help us?
Yes, sir, I will.
There's a whole file back here that has all the information.
I recall seeing a folder with the run sheet intended in.
That's it, right there.
Is that, is that what? What is that?
That was the preliminary that they gave. When they first came to court, that was what they had done up to that point. And then I don't.
And then we paid them and they quit?
Right.
And there are run sheets in here.
Go ahead.
I think if, if Clinton Butler, the last time he presented to the court, when he was done, I believe that the court specifically asked Herb to write a letter to Clinton or Benak, uh, that requests the status and when they would deliver. I believe that was asked of, out of court.
Let us look back at the minutes. I'll look back and see. I have not, uh, I just, I'd hate to have a fuss with them again, but.
Well, we just, we just need to be paid, I mean, receive what we paid for.
And, and I don't think we've got it.
Yeah. Our word counter here will find out for us.
I know. Go by and visit with her every day.
Okay.
Till she runs me off, which probably won't take very long. But that's all right. I'll go back and get.
Does that, does that put everything in perspective for right now?
Any other discussion or comments or anything about this? Yep. Y'all were here through all of that. Is there anything that we left out that y'all were aware of or anything?
But my recollection is that we, we received the run sheets that identified the properties, but it does not say what interest we have or who owns that. And that's what they were gonna do in this extensive surge and provide us. But we received a copy of the property listing that Carnes County had an interest in.
Has anybody got a copy of? Have we, is that what we gave them?
That's all I, I wasn't here, but that's all I have seen here, is that little binder full of files that are labeled with this property.
Well, let me, let me look at that good. I have not looked at it good. And that's my fault, not to anybody else's. But before we have a meeting, I will. And, uh, I, I don't think there's enough information in there, if I remember right, to do what needs to do. And I, dealing with oil and gas properties, you have to look at the title to every piece of property that you're dealing with to know who owns what. And in a, in a city, that means you have to look at every lot in every block. And there's not any shortcuts. There's just none. And that's, that's time-consuming. It takes a lot of time. I understand all that. But that's the only way. I'm not gonna sign something I don't understand. What interest is saying that we own? I'm not gonna sign anything saying that we own a particular interest if I don't know it. And, and knowing it means looking at the title by either me or somebody. And I'm not gonna do it for the county. That's not my job. Uh, county judge is not responsible for examining the title to all the county property. But, uh, we've gotta come to grips with it in some way because there's, there should be a good bit of money accumulated that's not being paid to.
Judge, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
When a lot of these landmen come to my office asking for division orders, they have done a run sheet on the property and the landman himself did that. So it may be possible for us to hire a landman, take what, uh, the title company has given us thus far and develop it into something that we can work with. I don't know. It seems like to me, most of the times I've seen requests for division orders, a land person did the work. There were not even lawyers involved in, other than drawing the title, drawing the paperwork up. And I'm not even sure they did that in a lot of cases. It's a thought.
Judge, on these properties that we are participants in from tax sales or something that we have ownership in, are the division orders where we're only receiving our portion of that property and the school district receives theirs and cities receive theirs?
That wasn't true. I keep telling you that it is. I don't, I don't have any clue.
But there's a, there's a ricochet back and forth. Some of the, some of the titles are owned by Carnes County. Some of them are owned by school district.
That's right.
As a trustee for us, the, uh.
And, and all of the other taxing entities. And some are owned by the cities as trustee. And, uh, they're, they're the trustee for all of the other taxing entities in the county. And that's true in every, every one that you acquire through a tax sale. That's, that's what happens. It has to, it's, the tax collection attorneys represent, uh, either the county or the school or the city. And they file for each one of them. And, uh, but it gets the whole interest that, that the taxpayer owns. And, uh, then they're holding for the benefit of all of the taxing entities that are involved in the thing. It's, it's a complicated problem. And it isn't easy. I, I talked with a tax attorney this week that was here at the courthouse. And I know him well. We just missed him about it. There's just a whole bunch of problems out there.
Judge, would, if, if these, uh, properties are held by trustee for the county or what have you, would, would not the entirety of the mineral interest go to that trustee for division? That's what I was thinking. It should go to the trustee. And then if it's the county, they've got to divvy it up. If it's a school, what have you. So that, if you part, well, you basically just said it, that further complicates it. You've gotta, you've gotta divide the thing out again.
It's a complicated process, I'm saying.
Now, 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 some of the taxing authorities, for example, the city of Carnes, may run a title on the property themselves. Or they may sign off on a division order on behalf of the county. So you don't, each one of us handle, as the judge said, on an individual basis. So a trustee may sign off on a division order because they represent the Carnes County. And some of it, Carnes County has to sign off on the division order with the trustee before anything happens. So each of them are, have a different set of rules that apply to it, depending on what they're doing. Am I correct, Judge?
Well, that, that's pretty much right, Herb. I, you know, since I've been in county Jennifer, that's been a long time. You're, uh, I ain't been contacted by anybody in the county, any other entity, about what are we doing on the minerals of this. I haven't had a conversation. I haven't contacted any of them either. I have to say, run through the ways.
Some of them are just operating independently.
Well, and, and the companies don't really care. Uh, they just suspend the money.
Yeah.
And they don't care where you're.
Yeah. And the, the, like I say, if the, and, and company think would be, if there's a trustee, they don't give a rat's who else is entitled anything. They're gonna send it to the trustee because that's the person of record or the entity of record that's responsible. So why should they go any further than that?
It, it seems to me that it might be possible, if we can get all of the entities, the taxing entities, to agree. And I haven't tried to do this, so I don't know if it is or isn't. To agree to hire somebody that will do this, do, look at every title in, in the cities that's owned by a taxing entity and give us some kind of written, uh, deal on who owns what interest. And, uh, allow us, doing it that way, to then contact Oil Contamination and, uh, see if we can't get division orders and get them signed. And I, it's, it's a lot of work for a very small amount of money. There's not a lot of money involved in one city lot, the minerals under it. There's just, just not.
You can spend more than it's cost-effective very quickly.
So, some of the times you get in conflict with the different, the city, for example.
You can, yes.
Very easily.
About, about what, each one of them, uh, is in conflict. But anyway, that's what's going on about all of it.
We, we should at least try and identify those properties that they committed to do.
Sir, there's one more entity. I don't know if anybody remembers it. But I think the Texas law has changed where the county roads, uh, that have the square, I mean, that surface of the county roads, the minerals under those roads now come to the county. Now, that's been, uh, that's been computed yet. But I believe the law goes into effect once, say, this year, is it?
I think it's seventeen, September one, seventeen.
Yeah.
Well, you know, generally, the law has been that the landowners, if they don't convey the minerals, when, when the road became used as a road, not necessarily when it became owned by any of the taxing authorities. Uh, the landowners still own the minerals. And every one, basically, is different, although it, I mean, they're not all different. But there are a lot of different ways that it was done. And you've got to look at every one and see, see what the mineral situation is. And it's not easy.
Somewhere in the last, since I've been here, and, and I don't know where it came from, I don't know if it was correct, but, uh, somewhere I read, looked at, saw something on the mineral interest under the roads in the county. And that was, maybe it was what was easily identifiable, I can't tell you, but it was not a lot. It was a few miles out of the five hundred miles of road, maybe less than ten percent.
Well, I, I'm doubtful that it was accurate.
Yeah.
Because it takes so much time.
Yeah.
And you've got to come back. You can't just do the last twenty-five years for it. There's just records go back a long way. And the roads generally came into existence a long time ago, not just recently. And, uh, they were handled differently. I grew up in another county, but we have the same problem over there that, that we have here. And, uh, I own some land that there are county roads at this point. Some are paved, some are just dirt county roads that have been roads a long time. Some have mineral provisions in the old deeds, some don't. Uh, it, it's a real mess.
Judge, is there any type of guidance? You wanna make sure that everybody in the budgeting process is on the same page or?
I, I don't know. I mean, I mean, let me look into this further and I'll, within a week, I should be able to see where, kind of where we are.
Are you heading towards something like, take a look at ten percent less or some percentage less? Is that what you're referring to?
I want us to be able, sometimes in this process, to play the what-if. You know, have three or four scenarios. If, you know, you make a fictitious budget and you say, "Well, what if your, your revenue stream is gonna be this amount? And you got this kind of budget." So you can kind of project the tax rate and say, "Well, no, we can't live with that." So we know that one's gonna be out. Then you go into another, you have another scenario that you, "Well, okay, let's tweak this one." So we don't get to the very end and we're trying to tweak everything. And then we could make a big mistake.
Talking about putting a size nine shoe, uh, nine foot and a size seven shoe.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, that sounds good, but I'm not sure. I'm just not sure.
Well, I'm just.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some, some departments can take percentage cuts and some don't fit very well.
Yeah.
But anyway, I understand what you're saying. Move with adjournment.
Second. All in favor of adjourned measure, I think? All the same side, please?